With me, uh. Thank you, Mo. Um, when you're with me, uh, we have Dr. Kim Boxenbaum and Ms. Christine Johnson, both of my assistant superintendents who will be, uh, will be ping ponging, you know, with regard to answers and responses, you know, this evening. Uh, so what I'd like to do, uh, is to have Dr. Boxenbaum introduce herself. She's actually new to the district. Uh, and she'll talk to you a little about that. Ms. Johnson has been in the district for some time now and she introduced herself. And then I'll go through the protocol for this evening. Uh, and then I have a brief statement and then we'll get to our questions. Uh, Dr. Boxenbaum, please take it away.
Good evening, everybody. I'm really happy and excited to be here. I am officially in week three of my time in TNEC as your new, um, assistant superintendent for educational services. And I've been hard at work, working with Ms. Davis. Um, she's been working really hard during our transition time, which I was really excited that we were able to get with each other. Um, and so she and I have been in, in a lot of communication as well as obviously working with Dr. Irving and Ms. Johnson and all of the other folks at, uh, the Board of Education, uh, building at the central office and, uh, working with the principals and other administrative staff this week to get ourselves ready and prepared. Just so you know a little about me, prior to working in TNEC, I was at uh, the Department of Education, uh, for the New Jersey Department of Education for two years as the Director of Special Education. Prior to that, I worked in Ridgewood Public School, so, uh, fellow, uh, Bergen County Town as the Director of Special Services there. And before that, I was in Livingston, and now I'm gonna stop because I've been in education for 25 years. I just counted the days and I don't want to take you through my entire history. Uh, but needless to say, I'm really excited to be here and happy to, um, work with Dr. Irving and Ms. Johnson to be as supportive and helpful as we can be to you in, in discussing, uh, any questions that you have around school and reopening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Boxenbaum. And if parents don't like, you know, some of the, you know, questions we're gonna answer, I'm gonna blame you, D O E, be it be you. Um, you know, so you're, you're the closest thing I have to the governor.
Lucky me. Okay. Do my best.
Uh, Ms. Johnson, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we're super excited to, um, start this school year off. Um, again, Christine Jimenez Johnson, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Schools. Um, any questions at all? We're more than willing, my department and, and all principals are more than willing to assist you as we transition to opening this school year. So, good evening and welcome to a new school year.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. So, uh, here, here's how, uh, tonight's town hall is gonna work. Um, down below, you all should see the queue in a, um, icon, uh, should be in the lower center of your, uh, dash. Uh, if you're on your computer on your phone, uh, at this point in time, we'll, we'll open that up and as parents, if you're interested in asking questions of myself and the assistant superintendent, please start putting your questions, um, in there now. Uh, we also received several questions from parents, um, who mailed questions in. And so what we will end up doing is going back and forth. We'll review, uh, the questions that were submitted, um, and sent. And I believe the assistant superintendents, uh, received those questions. Thank you both, you know, for reviewing them. Um, and, uh, we'll also go through the questions, um, that parents will have. Uh, and the time we have roughly, uh, about an hour, hour and a half or so for us to have our conversation today. Um, you know, we are asking you to please, you know, throw out, you know, any question you, you can. Um, if we've answered the question, especially answered it several times, uh, you know, we, we did this last night with the teachers. Uh, and there were several questions that were just kind of repetitive. And so if I happen to skip over a question, it is nine times out of 10, not because we're not answering it, it is because we have already addressed it. And I will try to acknowledge if I am skipping over a question, that we are skipping over one that had been addressed and, you know, what the reasons for that, uh, is. So, um, as we begin, um, I wanna just read a few statements, cuz I think some of the questions that you all asked will be involved, uh, or will involve, uh, you know, the statement, you know, that I will, uh, read. Um, pursuant to the Governor, uh, of New Jersey for Murphy's Executive Order 175, um, it is important for us to indicate, uh, the instructional model for the forthcoming year. Uh, I wanna repeat that, uh, I will reiterate as we did some months ago, that all students, uh, for the 2021, 2022 school year will be in person and instruction will take place five days for four days. Um, all encore and specials will be in person, uh, and they'll be following their typical school schedule. Social, emotional learning and the well-being of our families and students will be a top priority, especially during the first few days of school, and we can talk more about that. Uh, you know, as we move forward. Additionally, uh, while in person, students will not be working primarily on Chromebooks. The Google platform or, or Google Chromebooks will be utilized again as an additional tool, uh, as other tools we have in our classes to be able to deliver instruction. Uh, we will continue to provide students with technology-rich experiences, um, as we move forward. Um, you know, the genie has been out, let out of the bottle, and we are not going back relative to the progress we've made in technology. All students will be provided, you know, devices, uh, that they'll be used, uh, in school and be able to take at home. We will continue to work with our teachers regarding professional development as we move forward. With regard to academic interventions, uh, we have procured, uh, a program called IXL, a comprehensive, uh, K-12 computer-based program, uh, with individualized real-time analytics. Uh, it was purchased this year. Uh, you know, for students, grades kindergarten through 12, in order to support students and parents who may be struggling with ELA, English and Mathematics. Uh, we are proud to offer this resource to parents. In addition to that, the district will also be offering extended learning opportunities. Every school will either have a before-school, uh, program or an after-school, after, uh, you know, af- after-school, uh, program. Uh, you know, more information of that will be forthcoming next week, uh, for the principal town halls that will be facilitated by your building principals. Um, lastly, I will say, uh, as we've done this year, the summer of 2022, we will also have another summer learning program focused on academic enrichment and our content area and the work that we've done. With regard to athletics, at this time, fall sports have commenced practicing, following a safe, uh, competi- safe, following the safe competition guidelines and protocols released by the New Jersey SIAAA. That is the governing body of all, uh, high school sports. Uh, you, you know, Mr. Murphy, our supervisor and athletic director, uh, a- and our COVID response team will continue, uh, you know, to monitor the safe competition of our student athletes. Prior to participation, uh, in practices or, or contests, all students, uh, our student athletes will have to submit a negative COVID vaccine, uh, regardless of their vaccination status. This will be for the, uh, high school program and additionally, uh, the LM, the middle school program that we are proud to bring back online this year. With regard to cafeteria recess and physical education, I know there are several questions for parents regarding that. Administra- administrators will stagger meal times, uh, to allow for social distancing. Um, self-serve buffet lines will be prepackaged, uh, will be prepackaged, uh, and students will be able to grab and go, uh, those prepackaged lunch items with some availability for students to eat meals outside, uh, or in their classrooms. And our, uh, food service staff will facilitate that process. Uh, we want to make sure we utilize as many outdoor spaces while the weather is good. Um, you know, for all aspects of student socialization moving forward. In addition to that, recess will also be held in staggered shifts with an effort to promote social distancing and hygiene protocols. Again, uh, every effort will be made to ensure that recess is done outdoors, um, and in enough space to allow kids to still play, but be safe. Uh, physical education classes will be held in person, uh, and will focus on fitness. Teachers will continue to use social distancing protocols as well as limit the sharing of equipment as best as they can. Classes will be, will be held outside, uh, pending the weather and field conditions. Uh, in addition to that, I wanna talk briefly about, um, some of the, uh, nuts and bolts relative to how we will operate this year. Uh, pursuant to the governor's, uh, mandate, uh, you know, with regard to mask-wearing, uh, you know, all students, staff and visitors will be required to wear masks, uh, when we are in district buildings, uh, you know, on buses and regardless of your vaccination status. In addition to masks, uh, there will also be plastic barriers placed on student desks and tables as we are in our schools. Over the time, we will talk tonight, you'll hear me talk about layers of protection. Um, and while I think we'll have to acknowledge that, uh, there is no way that, uh, you know, I can or anyone can, uh, prevent, you know, COVID-19, but what we can do is try to mitigate it and do the best we can to put layers in place. Uh, vaccines are layers, uh, masks are layers, social distancing layer, uh, shields, layers, washing of hands, hand sanit- and sanitizers, layers. And we are going to do everything we can as we've done in the prior year. Uh, you know, to be able to, you know, provide as much, uh, layers of protection as possible, you know, as we move forward. Um, with regard to vaccines, uh, and this applies primarily to staff and faculty. Um, vaccinated individuals, uh, who are, who, who have shown and provided proof of vaccination, uh, will be exempt from mandatory COVID testing once a week. Those staff members who have not been vaccinated will have to submit a weekly COVID test, you know, to the, uh, district through our Human Resources, uh, Department as we move forward, uh, and conduct, uh, our screening, uh, of our health and safety notifications. With regard to communication notifications, uh, unfortunately, I am confident that at some point in time this year, no matter what we do and what we put in place, there will be some level of exposure or quarantining of individual students in our classes. And I think we have to be honest about that. With that said, uh, with regard to notifying you, parents, in reference to these, I, I wanna be clear, uh, that full contact tracing investigations can take anywhere from a few hours ultimately to a few days. Uh, you know, if, if you're in the healthcare field and do contact tracing, maybe you know this. And it's based on the necessary collaboration with the TNEC Health Department. Um, in addition to that, direct contacts, uh, of those individuals who have been directly, uh, in contact with someone COVID or someone's expected to have COVID will be notified immediately as they are identified in the contact tracing process. Uh, at all times, we will keep confidential with health information, um, as it is shared. Um, but once a week, site-based notifications will go out to the general school-based community on a weekly basis, as indicated. Uh, sharing, you know, what the, uh, issue was in a particular school, uh, and, uh, the remedy that was done for it. Uh, additional measures that I wanted to share with our parents, uh, effective, uh, this Monday, I will resume my Monday morning meetings with our township manager, Dean Kazinsky, and Dr. Gina Diaz, our health officer, to discuss the previous week local COVID impact. Uh, we did that last year. We are continuing that as well. Uh, we also will conduct a weekly operations meeting of our district COVID response team. And that is conducted of our, uh, security coordinator as well as other health, uh, safety, um, officials in the district. The district is also looking to collaborate with Holy Name Medical Center to provide weekly testing opportunities, uh, for students and staff, whether you're vaccinated or not. And as I said before, all non-vaccinated staff are required to submit, uh, weekly COVID tests. So, um, that's a mouthful, certainly for me to share, uh, but I wanted to at least kind of get, um, you know, the picture from, for parents for, um, you know, just where we're headed to for this year. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm going to, uh, go to the first set of questions. Uh, at, at any given time, I may ask Dr. Boxenbaum or Ms. Johnson to chime in or answer, um, as I'm navigating the questions that I've submitted, um, and that I have here. Uh, and so, um, you know, the first question I see, uh, it, I guess, is a question just in relation to our protocol for this evening. Again, we shared, if you have a question, please go right to the question and answer section of the notification. Um, and we will be able to conduct that, uh, there. Uh, all right. So, here we go. The first question. Uh, will there be a better option, uh, for air circulation once it gets cold outside, um, and not leaving windows open? Will classrooms have air purifiers? Will classes have teacher's assistants? I'll work in reverse. Um, tat, uh, classes would not have teacher's assistants. The same level of coverage that we have experienced in years past, uh, will continue. Uh, you, you know, the CDC, uh, does not, and the Department of Education does not require air purifiers. Uh, and so, um, to do so would be extremely costly in the district. Uh, we are doing our best to ensure, again, layers of protection. Uh, and we will have windows open for as long as the weather is cooperative. Uh, we have advised our principals and our teachers to use good judgment and common sense. Um, you know, when at times we can have windows open to be able to do so, uh, but when the weather changes, uh, to be able to close the windows as well. Um, a question was asked, will schools be open for full day? I think I've answered that. That answer is yes. Uh, there's a question, uh, please describe, uh, the COVID-19 safety protocol with respect to vaccination card testing mask, which is distancing specifically for TNEC High School. Again, um, I think I've answered that. Masks will be mandatory for all students. Uh, we will endeavor, uh, to, uh, have social distancing of three to six feet, um, when possible, uh, in a particular school or classroom. Uh, you know, you know, some classes will allow for the distancing, uh, six feet or three feet for that matter. Uh, you know, with regard to vaccination cards, we are only accepting vaccination cards from staff at this point in time. Uh, if during the midst of contact tracing, uh, you know, we identify a student has been exposed and there is a disclosure that a student, uh, had been, um, vaccinated and they can show proof of that, um, that will certainly impact how a student may or may not be quarantined, given the guidance from the, uh, CDC at that given time. Um, there's a question from Vivian. Um, good evening. Who will be the principal of Lowell this year? Um, Mr. Green, he is back. Uh, he is up and healthy and, uh, we spent the last two days together. So, I wanna give a quick shout out to Mr. Green and all the parents at Lowell. Uh, you, you got your principal back. Um, the next question, uh, at what time will schools start in the morning and end in the afternoon? Ms. Johnson, do you just wanna reiterate the schedule and just, you know, you know, that we are continuing to move forward?
Yes.
The other questions in the meantime.
Sure. We're continuing with our, um, full day in-person schedule. So, each school has its own arrival and dismissal. And the principals will actually go over the arrival and dismissal times with you during their town hall meetings. But we will resume back to our normal, um, arrival and dismissal schedule at each school.
Thank you so much. Um, Ms. Johnson, I'm gonna throw this to you. This is a pre-K specific. Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I can chime in on it too. Uh, but, um, you know, it, it's a long one. So, just, just bear with me. Um, you know, this is coming from a parent, uh, Miss Sanchez Taylor, uh, who asks, uh, she's a pre-K parent and new to the district. Um, and she says, considering the fact that the Delta variant is more contagious than Delta and the fact that three and four-year-olds will have issues, uh, masking properly for six to five hours a week, um, she is concerned. Uh, I'm just trying to, just trying to make sure I, I, I word this right. She thinks that pre-K students, um, should be allowed to take, uh, unmask at some point in time. Um, she says it's a parent of a three-year-old who is supposed to be starting this year. She, she's concerned and not comfortable about having her child unmasked, eating, sleeping with other unmasked and vaccinated children. A fair question. Uh, Ms. Johnson, uh, you know, just, you wanna explain our protocol for pre-K, um, for this year, um, you know, as we're moving forward?
Sure. Um, the pre-K students, I mean, right now, uh, Mr. Dubell is our current principal that will be opening pre-K, and he's working closely with the supervisor of early childhood and the master teacher, um, just to make sure that we're following all protocols as relates to students wearing masks. We realize that it's difficult for our youngest, youngest students to wear them, um, during lunchtime and, um, naptime. They will not be required to wear those masks. And, um, they will closely monitor the students as they're working in either their small groups, um, their, their learning centers and, um, you know, within whole group to make sure that the students are, are progressing and moving within the, the classroom efficiently. But, um, you know, students are required to wear masks, but the teachers will closely monitor them as, as, um, as the day goes on. But the two times that they will not have to wear them is during naptime and, uh, during, well, during mealtime.
Thank you so much. Uh, I have another question from Ms. Parker, uh, that emailed in, uh, in light of the Delta variant, I'm concerned uh, that the school district would expect, you know, kids, uh, to sit in a classroom all day with masks on. Uh, so many questions, but the most important one for me and my family is whether it be a virtual option or a hybrid option. Um, this is the most important to me. My family, uh, Ms. Parker indicated that, uh, E S Y this summer was, uh, you know, virtual and it was wonderful. Thank you. Um, the same should apply for the school year. Uh, you, you know, you know, the difficulty, uh, at times of being superintendent, uh, is that, um, you know, we have to follow the guidance of the State of New Jersey and the Department of Education. Um, the governor's made it very clear, um, that there will be no virtual option, um, you know, or hybrid option offered, um, you know, for, uh, schools, uh, uniformly. Um, there are certain conditions, um, you know, Dr. Boxenbaum, if you wanna maybe kind of mention what those are, um, with those caveats per the governor's executive order, uh, but, uh, by and large, a remote or virtual option will not be possible for the, for our district as a whole. Dr. Boxenbaum, you wanna cut, you just comment on that?
Yes. So, you know, the governor, a- as Dr. Irving said, the governor has said that schools have to return, you know, fully to in-person instruction, and that has not changed even with the, the changing circumstances around COVID and the Delta variant. Um, there are going to be options for if a student, um, is, um, exposed and requires, uh, quarantine and/or, um, would on, on the chance that the student would, you know, contract COVID, which hopefully that won't happen, but, you know, we, we have to pick, be prepared for that in case it does, that there will be, um, some remote options available where we would have students being able to stream into their, their classrooms. And that, in, in those circumstances, if it is COVID-related, um, absence or need to, uh, inability to be in school for those reasons, then we will be, you know, having the, the ability to have students stream into the classroom. Um, also, if we have students that are, uh, significantly medically fragile, you know, and, and have, are, are, uh, the nature of their disabilities, um, or their medical conditions contraindicates them being in person because they are, you know, medically compromised and may or may not themselves be able to even get the vaccine, then, you know, we will have conversations on an individual, one-by-one basis through my office, uh, for those students that are, um, have an IEP or a 504 plan and have those conversations individually with the parents, with the, uh, administration of the building and the, the case managers, be those the counselors or child study team members.
Thank you so much. Uh, I'm gonna go back to some of the questions. Whoa, 106. Okay. Uh, so, so we got a lot to get through, uh, and I'm gonna try my best to hopefully at least get through half of this. Um, you know, there's a question from Natasha about response, uh, for your daughter's school placement. I would ask you to please reach out to the school directly. Um, I just don't have enough information here to, to comment on that. Um, there's another question, um, with regard to, uh, transfers between elementary schools have been approved um, and supply list. Again, um, those are questions, uh, what I will do is school-specific questions, I'm gonna ask you to please, um, log into, uh, near your school town hall. Um, you know, I wanna do the best I can to really answer any COVID, um, and instructional global question. So, I, you know, with 111 questions, um, you know, if I get school-specific questions, I may ask you to please hold on to that question and share it with your building principal for next week. Um, and so i- in this case, uh, you know, transfers in between elementary schools, um, you know, and supply list. Um, I would ask you to please reach out to the homeschool that you designate to go to, and those folks can certainly, uh, advise you on the status. Again, another question about the supply list, uh, for, uh, grade levels. Um, again, I would ask you to please, uh, you know, hold tight and have that conversation with your, uh, building principal. Um, a question around remote option being offered, uh, in the event of COVID exposure. I think Dr. Boxenbaum just indicated that, uh, depending on, um, you know, the length of the exposure, if the district requires a staff member, student to quarantine, um, that will be, uh, one of the very, one of the two options, um, you know, for a remote option, and it will be for a limited time until, uh, a student or staff member has eclipsed their quarantine period or has tested negative or if the individual student is classified or has a 504. Uh, next question, will we have the option to send, uh, kids remotely? Uh, we've addressed that. Uh, we, we have a, a parent who, uh, you know, has asked, I'm fully in support of, of in-person learning. My main concern is how lunch will be handled. I have no problem with my children masked all day. Uh, my only concern is lunchtime. Thank you. Um, you know, Christine, do you just wanna reiterate just our, our game plan for lunch, uh, recess, et cetera? Um, and, and some people just logged on, so I just wanna make sure that they hear this, and I will skip over the questions moving forward.
Sure. Lunch and recess will be staggered. Um, for lunch, principals are making every effort to make sure that they are able to give, provide opportunities for students to be able to eat outside. However, that's weather permitting, um, eh, as well. But we are, they're also making sure that they arrange their classroom, their tables in the cafeteria so that they're distanced. Um, part of the servicing that will occur for lunch is that the meals will be prepackaged. Um, there'll be no, uh, buffet lines that students will stand on to, um, receive their food. So, all food will be repack, prepackaged. And, um, uh, you know, students will have to wear masks only during the time that they're eating. Um, recess will be the same thing, staggered, and, uh, I think for, like, specific, specific questions for elementary, middle and high, cuz it will look different at each grade level, those quite, those specific questions will be answered by the principals during the town hall meetings as to, um, exactly the scheduling and what exactly lunch will look like. But overall guidelines are that they'll be staggered and, um, they'll be prepackaged meals.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Next question I have is, what is the school classroom closure protocol, particularly for, uh, elementary school? Um, and so, so for all grade levels, uh, I wanna be clear that in the event of any, uh, exposure, and I assume, I, I have to assume that, uh, this is particularly around, uh, COVID-related incident. Um, if indeed, uh, there is a COVID exposure, uh, we are, we are asking all parents, and again, you will hear this from your building principal next week, to notify your building principal immediately. Um, if you are, if you or your child has tested positive, or if you and your child know that you've been exposed to someone from COVID, we need to know immediately. Um, some of the challenges that we've had in the last year have been parent notifying us a day or two after a child had normally tested positive or it being the weekend, um, and parents feeling that, you know, you can't reach out to us, you, you know, we are, you know, we are dialed in, um, to the communication from our parents, even over the weekend. And so, if indeed, um, there is an exposure, whether it is in district or, uh, uh, from the outside, uh, we will notify, uh, you know, you know, clearly the parents will notify us, um, and then we would do our contact tracing protocol. And as soon as we have, um, the individuals who have made, who may have been exposed, either as primary, secondary contacts, we will let those individuals know immediately, uh, as soon as our, uh, you know, uh, COVID contact tracing protocol has begun. At the conclusion of that week, we will then send a notification to entire school community, letting the school community know that there was indeed an outbreak, um, and the great level it was. We will not get specific for who and where and how. Uh, but, uh, we will certainly notify the community, uh, you know, on a weekly basis if there are exposures, uh, that take place in your building. Uh, next question. Um, great question. Uh, Dr. Boxenbaum, you wanna, I'm gonna throw this to you. You, you're still new, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, you, we're, we're a test this, right? Based on how, what we've been doing. Um, you know, the question is, um, how will the district address mental and emotional health of students and teachers and, you know, will be facing upon their return? This is an important question. Uh, and if you cover counseling, it'd be great for you to have to answer that.
Excellent. Yeah, this is a, this is an excellent question and something that is very important for all of us. I think, um, the mental health and wellness of our students and also our, our adults, our staff, our parents and families, you know, I think, um, the, 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 the impact of this pandemic has really brought to the forefront how incredibly important, um, being dialed into and aware of these concerns, the, the mental health and wellness, um, and social, emotional health and wellness of our, our students, our staff and, and our families, um, has made it really critical. So, we are, um, looking to make sure that even in the, the first few days of school, uh, the focus is going to be on reconnecting and re-acclimating our students and our staff back to full-in-person instruction. You know, we are in a position, we are, we are positioned, um, in a position where we have, um, been providing, um, we are gonna be providing for our staff, uh, some strategies around, uh, social, emotional wellness and in terms of our P D. We are also in the process, uh, professional development, sorry, uh, next week, um, focusing on staff wellness and helping them, um, to be dialed into what they can do for themselves, because we know that in, you know, we have to have our stu- our staff in a space where they're able to really help and support our students. In addition, we have, um, uh, the social, emotional learning will be a for- uh, at the forefront and a focus, um, in our schools is part of the instruction that's gonna be happening at all grade levels. We are also going to be putting, we are also in the process of putting together, uh, a wellness series that will work for our staff and for our parents and family offerings. So, those should be getting finalized as we're, we're working with various vendors and determining, um, scheduling for the year. So, that is something that we will be rolling out for everybody. But please know that the mental health and wellness of, of everybody, of all, all of, all of our, our children, our staff and our families is really of primary importance. We really are in this together, which is why these town halls are so important. The communication, the collaboration, you, you are visible. You know, we wanna make sure that we are here and you know that we are here for you. So, if you, you have a concern about your specific child, please reach out to your point of contact at the school building, be that the principal, the vice principal. If your student is already a student that's identified with a disability, reach out to, um, your case manager or your store, and you can also reach out to the school counselor if it's a student who is not, is, is not identified, right? Just a, a, a student that is a general education student. You have school counselors, outreach counselors as well as your school teachers. So, contact an adult at the school building, and that adult is gonna know who to go to in order to make sure that we get in contact with you to start discussions on what we can do to, to address your concerns and support you and your students.
Well done, Dr. Boxenbaum. Appreciate you. Um, next question from a parent, uh, if, if you are indeed a parent who has a student with a medical condition, 504 IEP. indeed a parent who has a student with a medical condition, five oh four IEP, um what is the process for uh, you know, exploring um, you know, you know, the options of uh, you know, a a accommodation relative to instruction? Um you know, you you have three options, your building principal, um your guidance counselor, or your case manager. Um but I would encourage you to reach out to those folks immediately. If you wait until um the start of the school year, it will delay that process and that conversation um as we move forward. Um you know, there's another uh question uh from someone, and I I I wanna be very um sympathetic with regard to this. This person i- is stating that for a year and a half, we've been careful, managed, uh we've done well from home. Um you know, why would we deviate from that? And again, um you know, you know, all superintendents are in the same spot that I'm in, having these types of conversations with parents. Um and um, you know, you know, unfortunately, um the governor has taken the option out of our hands. Um and so he's made it clear that we must return in person, full day, five days uh for next year. Another question regarding virtual option, um only schools with So I I'm just gonna read this through, and then uh maybe Miss Johnson, maybe you and I, you or you or I may may you may pick, take this one. Last year, the district treated students of all ages and all schools with same rules and schedules, recognizing that middle and high school students are different about mental abilities and engage eligibility for vaccination. Is it possible to com- commit to full day uh full schedule in-person education for older students? Um uh as we just said a second ago, that is gonna be for all students, not just for older students. Um all students will have full day in-person uh full schedule uh instruction. Did I get that right, Miss Johnson?
That is, that is correct.
Thank you. Again, some of these questions are repeat, so I'm gonna keep moving. Um Uh quick question, uh will students still be able to use computers in classes, or will they uh, you know, do traditional learning? Uh Miss Johnson, jumping on that, cuz I I I think we we kinda touched about it, but I think it's worth um um, you know, worth ju- just clarifying.
Sure. So um, yes, we are, we are trying our best to make sure that we go back to what instruction looked like prior to um COVID. So students will not be, well, they will not be returning to is what they were um exposed to during the hybrid learning, which was sitting in front of a device in class, as well as the teacher sitting in front of a device as the mode of instruction. Um the the mode of instruction will be where students are engaged, the teacher is teaching. However, we will still utilize the devices to um enhance learning and be able to support instruction. Maybe it might be through a small group lesson or just certain um uh applications that teachers have uh uh rece- received really good feedback on and instructional um uh, I guess the instruction of students has really um improved based on some of the interactive tools that they use during the hybrid learning, but the mode of instruction will be what it was before. However, we will continue to use technology to enhance instruction.
Thank you so much. Do another question about freshman orientation uh for next week. Um I again, I would ask you, again, I I don't wanna dodge in a particular way or feel like we're discrediting um the building specific questions, but that is really granular to the high school. And I would ask uh the individual asked that question to please reach out to the high school um, you know, you know, leadership, Mr. Valdez, the principal, uh, you know, for more information on that. Again, we have a hundred and forty three questions, forty four questions, um and I just wanna try to get to as many as possible. Uh Ms. Francis asks, will there, will there be hot food option? The answer is yes. Um the meals for lunch will be prepackaged, but will be warm uh for that matter. Um next question, um if my daughter had the option uh of doing uh Let me make sure I I just read this right. Um Okay, I think I think we answered that question already. There's a question of whether be a daily list uh or monthly list of grab and go meals, and what will they be? Um I I don't have an answer for that. Um and again, I I think for parents know, you know, if I have the answer, I'm gonna tell you. If not, what I will do is ask Miss Johnson to help us get an answer for that, and that will be clarified. And the principal town halls for next week. Great question, and thank you for asking that. I'm sure there will be a menu of some sort. I'm just not sure relative to how that will be advertised um and shared with parents uh moving forward. Um again, another question about uh air filters, HEPA filters uh portable in the classrooms, and uh indicated before, uh, you know, that will not be taking place uh in our schools. Uh will there be additional resources? Um okay, uh Dr. Boxenbaum, I asked you to take this one. Will there be additional resources for special education students who have behavior uh regressions due to virtual learning over the last year?
So uh the answer is going to be, yes, we are gonna have resources available for our students. Um those, um if you've got concerns or there have been any regression in terms of uh their expectations, then please make sure that you reach out to your student's teacher and the student's case manager. I will say that, and this is part of the conversations that we've been having at the administrative level, that, you know, it's, it's important to remember that our students, you know, have been out of school buildings for a year and a half now, right? So part of the instruction is going to be, and our our teachers are are fab, we have a fabulous group of teachers, and we've got a great group of administrators. And so the focus in the first opening days of school is really gonna be, as we said, re-acclimating, right, and reconnecting. So re-acclimating to the routines of the school, to the expectations, even how to walk down the hall, all of these things that students have been out of, that have not, you know, been um in the practice of, as well as reconnecting, reconnecting to, you know, student to student and socially to peer to peer, but also student to adult and, quite frankly, adult to adult. So that's really gonna be the focus in the first few weeks of school of really trying to get um our our school climate and our our culture kind of back set up, and what does it look like now, and how do we address that? So if if you have a student who has particular uh needs related to a disabling condition, please make sure that you reach out to your case manager to be able to have those conversations. Again, those have to be made uh at at the, at the table with the parent and all of the this this relevant school staff involved on an individualized basis. So yes, on a case by case basis, we'll have those conversations. Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Dr. Boxenbaum. Next question I have is um, you know, COVID test for athletes. Uh what is the timeframe for negative tests, i.e. uh valid uh two weeks prior to uh, you know, school starting seventies prior? Um our our COVID athlete testing uh protocol has already begun. Uh I would ask, this is a parent of of an athlete, to please reach out to your school coach, uh school, your, your, the coach of the sport um at the school in which you're at, cuz again, uh we do now have sports at the middle school and high school. We're very proud to be bringing back our middle school athletic program that got stopped because of COVID. Um, you know, but the particular coaches will have more information via the athletic director um and the middle school coordinator uh in reference to testing and the timeframe associated with that. Uh, Miss Johnson, will performing arts uh, you know, be available for this year? Um hopefully, yes, the sports can. Um I know the answer to that, that is yes, but uh, Miss Johnson, do you wanna just talk briefly about just what our, what our plans are relative to performing arts?
Sure. Yes, we have a new um performing arts supervisor this year, which is great, and we'll we'll be able to plan lots of different, you know, the plan is to plan lots of different activities and assemblies and performances for students, but of course, you know, that comes with what the supervisor works with school, individual schools with, and what programs um that we have in place, but the in, the intention is, you know, God willing, if we're able to continue um to continue with our performances.
Thank you so much. Um next question is, uh, there were two questions in a row. Uh will the call tracks um, you know, daily monitoring form continue for this upcoming year? At this point in time, the answer to that is yes. Um, you know, again, another layer. Uh and uh, you know, some of these things are gonna sound redundant. Uh some of them uh may be annoying for certain parent, parents, parents and families, uh but Qualtrics at least is a reminder as we get up to really do our own internal assessment for how we're feeling, how our children are feeling, to have that conversation. So Qualtrics will continue uh, you know, for this year. Uh there's a question that says my child enrolled in pre-K four. Again, I'm reading very fast, cuz I'm trying to get to these questions. Uh my child is enrolled in pre-K four program. How many children would be in a classroom? Uh the uh classroom size for all our pre- pre-K programs can go no more than fifteen students um in a particular class. Um, you know, we just indicated, uh, do kids have to get tested regularly or just staff? At this point in time, um it is just staff who have not been vaccinated. Uh someone asked, can we repeat uh if there are four days in in the week's schedule? I think we took care of that. That question was asked pretty early. Again, we are going full day, five days a week. Again, I'm just going through, a lot of these are gonna be repetitive. Uh Dr. Boxenbaum, will IEP meetings be in person or virtual?
IEP meetings um can be virtual and they can be in person, you know, um depending on, we we really wanna open the flexibility to our parents, understanding that um one thing that came out of this was, was our ability to offer virtual meetings for parents, and we've seen a a real improvement in parents' ability to attend those meetings. So there will be both in-person and virtual options available.
Thank you so much. Uh there was a question about whether be after-school programs um and when they will start. Uh we will certainly have our after-school SAC program. Uh we are looking uh to start SAC uh roughly about two or three weeks after the first day of school. Um, you know, you for more information on that, you will receive that uh in your uh, you know, principal town meeting next week. Uh there's another question about classes outside. Does that mean exactly which grades uh the rotation? Same for lunches. Like again, um the outside protocol, um we have the administration um have entrusted and empowered the principals to come up and create that schedule. And so uh in your principal town hall next week, those should be some of the questions I would encourage parents to ask as we move forward. Um There's a question, uh, we we do have a Zoom town hall for kids tomorrow night. Um, you know, I would encourage uh parents to please encourage your students to join us, uh that information on the website. It is for all students, all grade levels. Um, you know, we are doing our best to try to reach out to everyone, teachers, parents, and even our kids for that matter, uh because there are a lot of questions. I'm clearly at a hundred sixty-four questions and forty-three answers. Um, there are a lot of questions and concerns people have, and we're gonna do the best we can. So I would encourage all the parents who are here tonight, if your students wanna log on tomorrow, um, you know, we we welcome the opportunity to address our students and answer their questions, uh because that's, I'm sure some of them will be the same, but they're gonna be different and specific uh to their growth and development as they're moving forward. Um there's a question uh about are non-vaccinated students allowed back in school? The answer to that is yes. Uh the state of New Jersey requires that every child is entitled to a thorough and efficient free and public education. We cannot deny a student uh that uh based on their uh vaccination status. Uh question is, will back-to-school night uh be in person or virtual? Back-to-school night will be in person, um as will be parent-teacher conference night. There's a question with regard to um, you know, weekly testing for students. Uh we will provide an update as we begin the year of our vendor uh for weekly testing. Uh, you know, we have reached out to several vendors. I I mentioned Holy Name, but just one, uh but we will be conducting um our weekly tests as we did before, and as we begin the year, we'll certainly provide that information for all parents and students. Um I was very proud of the fact that we are one of the very few school districts who began that protocol, uh that drive-through testing. Um and at times, it was uh certainly uh work, uh but we were proud to provide that resource to our families, and we will do so again this year. Great question. Um are uh all teachers vaccinated? If not, uh will we be informed of our child's uh teacher who is vaccinated? Um the answer to the second part of that question is no. Uh because of HIPAA laws, we are now allowed to share uh the medical uh status of our staff. I can tell you, as of this time, uh close to seventy-five percent of our staff have been vaccinated. Uh we are still collecting information from staff, um, you know, but we roughly employ between, you know, five to six hundred employees, give or take, you know, any particular day. Um I am proud of that number. Um, you know, I certainly would be prouder if it was higher, uh but I also have to respect uh, you know, people's wishes. Um and those folks who have chosen not to vaccinate will have to um, will have to um get COVID tested weekly. Um a question around uh classrooms having AC. Uh unfortunately, uh as many of you all know, a lot of our schools are older, um in barring a uh a critical referendum, um, you know, you know, in our community, um, you know, the cost to not just um put air conditioning in the buildings, but also sustain the wiring, the voltage, and the increased um cost would be substantial. Uh at this point in time, um, you know, you know, the buildings that uh have, that do not have AC will remain for this year. There's a question about uh students learning on computers. Miss Johnson, I think you answered that very well. Um I think I answered the after-school program. Again, SAC will be available. More information will be released uh, you know, at, you know, your principal town hall um in the forthcoming week um as we move forward. Great question. Um is there a plan to roll out vex- vaccinations uh in school once they are available to children under eleven, or will we need to book appointments uh, you know, through the health department or Holy Name, et cetera? Um as hopefully our parents know, uh, you know, last year, you know, we conducted a series of vaccination um days for teachers and for students. Um, you know, that, you're gonna get a memo from me this weekend on Friday, uh really kinda underscoring a lot of what I'm talking about today in that communication, uh because again, with five hundred parents uh who have uh joined us this evening, um there's still a whole lot of parents who haven't. Um and so um, you know, in that information, we'll certainly share with you the next round of COVID vaccination for kids age twelve and up. Um, you know, we are committed to doing everything we can to provide the opportunity for students and families. And so uh if we have a uh vaccination site who's willing to partner with us, we will do so. We will do everything we can to try to facilitate and make that process easy for you as we move forward. Uh this is uh Mr. Henry, one of our teachers and parents, so he uh does double duty. And Gerald, thanks for logging in. You were here last night, um and now you're here tonight. So, you know, appreciate you, man. Thank you for being such a great role model, um and a wonderful parent, um, you know, and hopefully kids will be on tomorrow night, and we'll get to Henry trifecta. Um, you know, uh but Miss Johnson, um, you know, last year, remote learning for middle school students looked different than it did for my pre-K student. Uh in the event of necessary quarantine, and I believe the hybrid learning uh with uh the classroom teacher, will those differences between those grade levels uh, you know, extend for this year? So, you know, do you just wanna just kinda briefly on what what we might be able to expect relative to the virtual experience for pre-K students or younger students, elementary students versus high school students?
Um, but it, are we staying specifically if we were to close for hybrid instruction?
No, this is about quarantining.
So for quarantining, um if 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 there is a need for a student to quarantine, um where they're out for an extended period of time, we are responsible for providing um, you know, instruction to those students. So the district will be sure to provide live instruction um synchronous as much as possible to those students, whether it be via streaming, um, you know, within the classroom, but when we speak of streaming, we're speaking of the synchronous instruction that we'll be able to provide.
Thank you. Um question is, will students have use of lockers? Uh we are still working on on an answer to that. We're waiting on guidance from the state, um, you know, relative to, you know, surfaces. Um an argument can be made, uh because students uh lockers are their own property. Chances are, not many students will be touching a particular locker, and we do have a sanitizing protocol and uh the series of sanitizing wands that go between the school. Um I I will commit, Miss Johnson, if we can just make sure we provide that answer to especially to our middle school uh and high school parents by next week, um just so we have that firm answer, uh, you know, as we move forward. Uh how will um the child receive instruction of his book? We just talked about that. Uh will testing be mandated uh anytime for students? Um testing can be mandated for students if there is a suspected exposure, um, you know, of COVID nineteen or a um, you know, exposure that we identify that needs to be uh examined. All staff and students will have to wear masks. Just wanna clarify that. I just wanna make sure I I read this, and again, you know, as we type and, you know, reading sometimes can be um, oh, you know, you know, a little different. Um I believe uh the question is, will the staff that are vaccinated, you know, the same rules of the staff that are un, that are not vaccinated regarding a weekly COVID testing? Um I think we've answered that, you know, the answer is no. If you are vaccinated, you do not have to submit a weekly test. You will make the test available through a vendor uh for all students and staff, and people can elect to test, but it will not be mandated uh for those individuals. Okay, this question, I think, asked already. Um it was a parent in reference to the uh pre-K program. Uh we answered the question around lockers. We answered the question around after-school care. I'm actually, I'm actually feeling very good that some of these were answering. Um, where are these schools returning? Uh there's a question, that's a great question. Uh were we supposed to return student laptops uh that they received last year, uh if they're going to a new school this year? Um I believe the answer is no. Luckily, our technology director, Mr. Saleh, is facilitating uh this, so Mohammed, I'm gonna ask you to weigh in on that. Mo?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Irving. No, the students will keep their devices from school to school. We have our inventory that is a district-wide inventory, so we know. We have our inventory that is a district-wide inventory, so we know who has each device. And they can hold on to that device as they move from building to building.
Thank you so much. Next question, you know. Will students be allowed to de-mask during these times as per Governor Murphy's recommendations? It will determine and will be based on the circumstances of that day. We will encourage our principal to make sure our students have mask breaks. But, you know, Miss Belburg, you know, in the event of extreme heat, we're also going to, you know, use common sense. And if we need to call an abbreviated school day or use a half-day schedule to at least make sure kids have instruction, but they're not wearing masks all day, we will, you know, examine those options too. It's a great question. As we know, some of our schools in September and in June can absolutely be sweltering. And so I hear that. I understand that, and our principals know, as do our assistant superintendent, that, you know, we need to make sure we're making the best decision possible relative to, you know, the breathability, but also the comfortability of our students as they're in school. There's a question with regard to how many students would be in this classroom. You know, the class size of our classes will vary. I would encourage you to reach out to your building principal to just talk about your specific classes, you know, and the sizes that may be there. Question outdoors, will students be allowed to be unmasked? Yes, students will be allowed to unmask outdoors, provided that we are observing some degree of social distancing. Was there a thorough review of the ventilation system in our school buildings? That answer is yes. All school districts needed to submit a ventilation and air quality report to the Department of Education. I am proud of the work that our facilities department have done, you know, to prepare that report and to ensure that the air quality of our schools is in, you know, top condition, you know, and light up everything that we've been going through. There's a question around the wellness forms, using thermometers instead. You know, unfortunately, you know, we will be moving forward with the wellness forms and not thermometers. Got it. There's a question with regard to who's the point person, appoint persons in charge of a COVID response. That is Mr. Cameron Cox. He's our coordinator of public safety. And now he is also our COVID response coordinator. You know, parents will be receiving as we start the school year, a list of frequently asked questions as well as other protocols relative to our COVID response. And so any question that you will have will be answered there. I think we addressed mask breaks will certainly happen. Question, are masks, excuse me, are vaccines required for students 12 and up? They are not required, but I will tell you at your chief school administrator, I am encouraging it. If you are comfortable, if you feel as though that this is something that is readily available for your family, it will certainly help relative to exposure, relative to contact tracing moving forward. There will be desk shields on desks in our schools. I think the answer, students are quarantined, will be offered a remote option. The answer is that is yes. For the time that they are quarantined, they must return thereafter. Great question. You know, vaccinated individuals are still getting COVID and are more of a Trojan horse because they may be asymptomatic or had very few symptoms. What is the rationale that vaccinated teachers are exempt from weekly testing? We are following the guidance from the Department of Education in the state of New Jersey. The governor, you know, has issued guidance that state workers who are vaccinated are exempt from COVID testing. And many districts have adopted that policy. That falls short of mandating mandatory vaccines for everyone. And so again, I know as parents, some of you may question how and why. We are doing the best we can to operate within the system we have and the rules that have been given to us by the state of New Jersey that we must follow. Will masks be available in schools if needed for students? The answer to that is yes. Each school will have a supply of masks to be able to hand out if indeed a student masks breaks. We are asking all parents to do the best they can to ensure that students come with their mask every single day. Again, some questions. Question is, is there an updated cleaning schedule and how would that work? Again, I would encourage you all to, you know, speak to your building principals in reference to the cleaning schedule. There is a cleaning schedule and there is a checklist that our facilities department has given to all our operation and maintenance staff to follow. You know, the building principals can speak to more specifically what those, what those times will be. But our buildings are clean and sanitized regularly throughout the day. The principal town halls are next week. You know, the information is available on our district website. I would encourage you to please go to the website and go to your school's local website. And all the information from the town halls will be there. They take place during the course of next week. Question about are students allowed to leave, leave school property for lunch? As of now, high school students are the only ones allowed to leave the premises. The building principals for the middle school will be weighing those options, you know, as they think through and think through the start of the school year. The question is, how will teachers go through other daily lessons with students wearing masks and seeing that they will be inside a building, hearing and other, hearing other party through a mask can be very difficult? That is correct. You know, our teachers are going to do their best. I believe we have some of the best educators in the state of New Jersey in this country. And I believe that they know what they need to do relative to how they will project and use their voice and communicate with our students. Great question. The Chrome, good evening, the Chromebook given out to my seventh grader. Would now go back to school or stay unless they need them home? Ms. Johnson, do you just want to underscore that why we want them home and in class, home and in class? Because that's a great question.
Yeah, sure. So we encourage you to have your students bring their devices to and from class. Our, they're able to log into the Google Classroom with our devices, and we're able to monitor those devices. And they're also able to access many of the applications with their Chromebooks that they will not be able to do with their, with their personal devices at home. So we're strongly, we're asking that students come, travel back and forth to school with their devices, and also that you make every effort to charge them at home so that they come fully charged to school. There will be opportunities for them to charge at school if needed, but it just makes it easier if they, you know, get into the practice of charging them at home.
The question around, thank you, Ms. Johnson, a question around getting your teacher assignment supply list again. That information will be answered next week. I would encourage you to log on to your school's websites to be able to get that information. Again, another school-specific question. Again, a question around breakfast and mealtime. Again, I would encourage you to ask those questions next week. We discussed the lunch protocol. You know, Ms. Johnson or even Dr. Boxenbaum, you can weigh in on this. What is being done to help students who have fallen behind academically to close that, you know, education opportunity gap? You know, Ms. Johnson, do you want to take it? And then Dr. Boxenbaum, do you want to comment thereafter?
Sure. I mean, well, we already said that beginning of school, we'll focus on, you know, socio-emotional learning and making sure that students become acclimated and reconnected to their buildings and the structure of instruction. But, you know, we will be doing lots of assessments, whether they be informal assessments or formal assessments, to be able to gauge where students are at, in addition to what we've started, what we're entering the school year with. Intervention periods, academic intervention periods will be implemented within the schedule. And the, we have coaches within each building that will be working with teachers as well as students to make sure that they support instruction within the classroom and in small groups outside of the classroom. In addition to that, principals will be offering before and after-school programs to make sure that they target those students as well. Dr. Boxenbaum, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
You are very, you're very comprehensive. The one, the one thing that I will add is that, you know, we are working to make sure that we are providing different academic interventions and strategies to our teachers to be able to work with our students. And we're doing that not just through special education, but with the idea that, you know, these, these strategies. So for instance, we're, we're looking at providing training around executive functioning, that, that side of the socio-emotional learning that works with executive functioning, helping our students organize, helping our students learn to plan, helping our students with their regulate, self-regulation, all of those pieces. Those kinds of strategies that we're going to be working through with the professional development with our teachers are, are going to be infused into the instruction in the classrooms and also into the before and after-school programs where we can work with students that need more targeted assistance. That's been determined based on the assessments and our understanding of where the students are.
Thank you so much, Dr. B. There's a question, is there an option to opt out of the five-day in-person? No, unfortunately, as we indicated before, the governor has required five days to be, you know, the mandatory requirement moving forward. Parent, Ms. Johnson, it's a very important question. You know, are preschools, age students aged through required to be potty trained?
I mean, we, we, we encourage our students to be potty trained as they enter. We know that we have accidents, and we know that many of them are not on that full schedule. Our teachers are prepared for that, but the recommendation is that, you know, they are potty trained. However, our teachers are prepared to work with our students and make sure that they, you know, assist them and in, in those grade levels.
As, as a superintendent who has helped on days that I have been in the preschool buildings, I would tell you, parents, please, we encourage you to, you know, continue to work your students around potty training. But we also acknowledge accidents happen, and if just poop, you know, you know, we will do what we have to do, you know, to help support our children and you as we, you know, work with our kids to get regular, you know, as they are on, you know, going through that, you know, process together. You know, as a parent of a, you know, 18-month-old who we just passed far away yesterday. So my son is, you know, flipping out. You know, I know all too well about transition and the importance of those. So, you know, you know, we will work with you moving forward. Great question. Dr. Boxenbaum, I'm going to ask you to answer this, and this is a very, very important and delicate question. But I think it is important to ask, this parent asks, is there a protocol for special education students in terms of mask, mask breaks? As I have a child who has autism and sensory processing disorder, where it's difficult for him to wear masks five plus hours, Dr. B?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point, and that is something that I know that schools have been working, not just in TEAC, but this has been something that's been a challenge for a lot of our students that have those sensory processing disorders or, or challenges. So in terms of the masking, the unmasking, the protocol, if your child is having some specific challenges with that, please reach out to your child's case manager. You know, we need to start looking at how we come up with our behavior protocols in terms of doing training for our students with masking and unmasking and how to keep that on. That's a process that the behaviorist and/or your child's case manager can work with you on, as well as your special education teacher. So I'm going to direct you in that, in that venue. And if there are any challenges or difficulties related to that, let me know. But we do have BCBA's in the district, and I know that they have been working on developing protocols as we develop protocols for all kinds of behavioral pieces and challenges that come with the sensory processing disorders to be able to assist students in learning how to tolerate the mask for longer and longer periods.
Dr. Boxenbaum, you answered this yesterday, so I'm going to ask you, you did such a great job. So I'm going to ask you to answer this next question. If a child is home because he or she is not feeling well or sick, will the child be allowed to attend class virtually?
So if a child is, is, is home because they have a doctor's appointment or because they're sick or under the weather, I'm presuming that any of our kids that are starting to feel under the weather, one of the things that, that we're going to consider is whether we need to go get them a COVID test or not. If a student is, is feeling unwell or absent for another reason, we are going to follow the, the procedures that we typically do and had to have done pre-pandemic. If a student is, needs to be absent because they are quarantined or because they are ill due to COVID, then yes, we will have virtual options available. But for a regular, something that would be considered a regular absence, no, we're going to handle that the way we have always handled things.
Thank you so much.
I hope that was as good, was well answered tonight as it was yesterday.
Pretty good. Let's move forward. I think we answered the question around, or mask. What is the plan for students in classrooms that are quarantined? I think we shared that and answered that, I think we answered it several times already. There's a question from a parent that says, my son is in a sixth grade next year, and that not yet, it is not yet eligible for the vaccine. Should we show weekly COVID test for our son? At this point in time, you are not required to do so. There's a parent asking about a specific start and end time, you know, for their, for their particular students. Again, I would ask you, and especially because I don't know the school, you didn't put that here. You know, you should log into your, your principal town hall and have that, you know, ask that question as we move forward. So there's a question that says, I mentioned, Dr. Irving, that plastic barriers, will we use a student desk? Will students be able to move around in the classroom, or will they be confined to their desk in their classrooms? I'm a parent of an elementary student. Thank you for the clarity. Ms. Johnson, you want to take a stab at that? You want me to? You know, I don't, I don't, I don't mind.
I mean, I, what I will say is that teachers will make every opportunity to mirror what was happening before. And but if there's, you know, if there's small group opportunities, you know, where students usually work with teachers in small groups, I'm pretty sure they will do that with barriers within that small group as well. In terms of students working with each other, they will probably remain at their desks, working with each other. I don't know that they will congregate together as, you know, as they have in the past for a small group. However, that is an opportunity where they can utilize their Google classrooms and have small group instruction that way as well, where they're pairing up with each other. So like I said, there will be times that teachers will utilize those Chromebooks and Google meets to do things like that and, and take advantage of those, of that learning that occurred during hybrid instruction. Dr. Irving, do you want to add to that?
No, I, I think you answered it, and you answered it well. Thank you. You know, there are the, you know, another question from, that's actually a statement from parents, that the parent, education director and child care program, I just want to reassure preschool parent that children will be okay with wearing masks. We did conduct a survey of our parents, roughly 14, you know, 100 parents responded to that survey. And over 90, I think it's 3 or 94% of our parents indicated at all grade levels that their students were okay with wearing masks all day. So I feel very good, you know, about, you know, the ability of our students to wear masks. Let me keep moving. In addition to, again, someone asked about, you know, supply list for the grade level. Again, you know, you know, we got 110 questions answered, another 176. You know, those questions should be answered directly, you know, by your building principal. Then move on to the next one with fully vaccinated students or faculty. Need to quarantine if there is exposure, or will they be able to continue attending school if masks are worn? Will they need a PCR to remain in school? Great question. Let me, you know, I'm reading it to myself, really should read aloud, will fully vaccinated students or faculty need to quarantine if there is an exposure? Or will they be able to continue attending school if masks have been worn? Will they need a PCR to remain in school? Ms. Foreman, this will determine, this will be determined by the guidance at that time. The state of New Jersey, as we ended last year, indicated that if you were an individual who was fully vaccinated but was exposed, you did not have to quarantine. At this point in time, we understand that guidance is shifting, and it may shift before we start school. And so I would love to give you a firm answer at this point in time. I will tell you, by the time we open school, we will give a definitive answer of the guidance at that particular time. You know, it's, it's a tricky one, because this has changed. And I think at, at, at one point, when many of us were getting vaccinated, we thought that the vaccine was going to be really, you know, the ultimately the thing that stopped people from getting COVID. As we all know, you know, breakthrough, you know, breakthrough cases have occurred. And so, you know, it's important for us to understand this. Ms. Johnson, this is this is a really interesting one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually volunteer to take the second part, but I will actually take the first part. What will, what will be the main curriculum covered for learning purposes, special topics such as such as LGBTQ curriculum, the Amistad curriculum, the Holocaust curriculum, et cetera. And then the second question is, what does the district stand on critical race theory? And I will answer that.
So per the mandate this year from the Department of Education, we, our new curriculum requires us to cover within our pacing guide and within our curriculum, the updated mandates for LGBTQIA+ disabilities act as well as Holocaust and and I'm sorry, as well as Holocaust and Amistad. So that is part of our mandate this year, and it's part of the NGDOE mandate as well. So our curriculum and our teachers will be receiving. We actually did start that work last year with LGBTQ committee that was started last year. However, that will continue this year throughout our curriculum for our students.
Thank you. And with regard to the question, what's district stand stance on critical race theory? Um, the district does not have a stance on critical race theory. Critical race theory is a college-based curriculum. It is not taught, you know, for K to twelve. And so we would not have a stance because it is not a theoretical model that be applied to K-12 school districts. Let's move on. Ms. Johnson, this is, it's a question, but more so a recommendation. I think it's something that I think we should consider. I'll I'll read it in 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 totality. You know, the parent says, Dr. Irving, my son started in the district last year during remote learning, and he will be going to seventh grade. Since it it will be in this will be in-person learning, he had since 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 they were virtual, I'm sorry, it's been a long day for me, and I'm reading a whole bunch of these. You know, he was given a buddy to help him figure out where things and places were located in the school, in addition to his locker, et cetera. This is all new to him. It may be difficult considering three to six feet apart rule. Do you have, do you have something like that in place for new students? A buddy system or a process for helping to acclimate new students to the building? It's a great question.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I will definitely work with our school principals to make sure that many, many of our students didn't return. The way I'm seeing this question is that your child be entering school because they remained home last year. So the process and the the you know, getting familiar with what's required in the school building will be new for your students. So I will definitely speak with principals to see if they you know, may perhaps put in some type of buddy system for those students that especially are A, new to our district, and then, you know, new to coming back to school after being out for two years. So definitely a great recommendation. I'll speak to principals about that.
Thank you so much. Next question, traveling out of state for the weekend, will the child need to quarantine before coming back to school? At this point in time, I believe the state of New Jersey has not updated its travel advisory matrix relative to states you know, that are quarantined. I would ask, you know, parents to please pay attention to the state of New Jersey's you know, website that indicates, you know, which, you know, states indeed would be on that list. As we all saw, many of those states came off the list. As we ended last year, I will imagine as we enter the fall, many states will be coming back on. And I would encourage our parents to to pay close attention to that. We will certainly provide that data information as well. Is there a standard quarantine protocol? I understand some modifications may be based on the vaccination status, but what is the standard procedure? There is no standard procedure. I want to be clear about that. Every circumstance of COVID and COVID exposure is unique. What is possible is that a quarantine could be as short as seven, five to seven days, or as long as fourteen days. There are other triggers that mitigate that, whether or not a person is vaccinated. The degree of exposure, primary or secondary exposure. That is why, unfortunately, I would love to say, hey, if this and that, we have learned over the quarter, last year and a half, every single COVID circumstance is unique. That's what makes it so difficult to do contact tracing. That's what makes it difficult to try to narrow, you know, things down and try to communicate in a very totality, in a total fashion, for that matter. But the range of quarantine could be from five to seven days, you know, to as long as fourteen days. You've answered that question. Question regarding mask, again, mask or mandatory? I just answered the quarantine period. So let me, I'm gonna read these questions, make sure I'm clear so I can answer it. Can I share information regarding number of students, if any, who attended school in person and contracted COVID during the 2021 school year? I I do not have that information on hand. There were certainly cases of COVID of students who and we we do know the cases and have that information, but I do not have that information on hand at this point in time. I can certainly get it and share it, Mr. Royal, for you, you know, and for parents who are interested. Did any contact contract contact happen during the during the camp for the campus this summer? Sponsored by the TNEC BOE. So I I kind of mumbled through that. I think the question was, you know, did any, were there any COVID cases reported, you know, this summer? And so I will, I, we made it through the summer roughly about five weeks. And in week five, there were two cases back to back, two positive cases of students. You know, we quickly notified the students and those who were in the vicinity of the need to quarantine and were able to mitigate circumstances from there. Question is, is gym indoors and with mask, gym can take place indoors or outside? You know, indoors mask will be required. It is possible that if students are outside and socially distanced, a mask can be removed for gym. Can you answer that question? We've indicated after school programs will be available, depending on the school, there may be a before you know, program or after school program, academic enrichment, and we also will have our SAC, you know, program as well for our students as well. Will students be able to use lockers? We're gonna get that information, you know, and get a firm answer for that for next week. Great question. All right. So, you know, if schools are closed for snow for for days and which is snows, will students have to attend class virtually? You know, we are going to make those decisions in those moments. We do have snow days on our calendar. You know, I would like to see us use them, but I also have to acknowledge if we exhaust the level of snow days that we have, then we will have to be able to, you know, find other mechanisms to be able to hold instruction. The state of New Jersey has not given us guidance on whether or not virtual days can count if indeed there is snow and inclement weather. So we are waiting on that. Ms. Johnson, do you just want to share, you know, again, someone asked, how do we know when our school town halls are being held? Can you just tackle it, please?
Sure, they're posted on your school, on each individual school website, as well as the district website. So but I can tell you, they they start on Monday. I believe Lacy is on Monday. And then we have town halls on Tuesday. There's no town halls on Wednesday, and we have town halls on Thursday. I believe the high school, I don't have the exact schedule, but Teneck High School and
Don't worry about guessing. I got it. It's because I got it. It's not all my calendars. So so it's, I got, I do. So Lacy is at six o'clock, Theater Lacy's at six o'clock on Monday, the twenty-third. On Tuesday at five PM is the Hawthorne School Town Hall. At six PM is the Bryant School Town Hall. At seven PM, the Teneck High School Town Hall. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth is the Board of Education Special Public Board Meeting. I would encourage our parents to attend that meeting. We'll be going through our full plan, a full PowerPoint of the information we're sharing on that day. On the twenty-sixth, at five o'clock, Lowell will have their town hall. At six o'clock, Benjamin Franklin will have their town hall. At seven o'clock, Whittier will have their town hall, and Thomas Jefferson will have their town hall. Again, all the information available on your you know, on the website, you know, for your your school specifically. Ms. Johnson, I didn't want you to have to, you know, you know, you know, struggle through that when I knew I had the answers in front of me. So thanks for helping. Folks, we've been in training with our administrators all day. So, you know, we're trying to find some levity, you know, as we're moving forward. So just please, if we're quirky, that's the only reason why. We talked about the questionnaires that they will be required at this point in time. You answered that question. This is a question, who will be responsible for supplies like sanitizers, masks, face shields, wipes, et cetera? Should parents apply this? Over the district supply? Great question. So the district is committed to doing everything we can to to supply many health and safety measures as possible. And so we are supplying masks if indeed a student attends school without a mask or it needs or is a needed one because it broke. We do have face shields and death shields that we will be supplying as well. We have hand sanitizing stations stationed all throughout the school as well. But I would encourage parents to please send your children with ample mask, ample hand sanitizer or sanitizing wipes, you know, for for what you, you know, you know, see fit. Folks, we we are beginning to, you know, conclude, we're gonna be done at eight thirty. I want to commit that if if I am not able to answer your question this evening, I would do, I would do the best I can to make sure that they are shared with the building principals and that these questions are addressed either next week or during my presentation, you know, with the Board of Education. There's a question again about orientations. Again, please reach out to your building, your building for that. There's a question about the our after-school SAC program. Again, for more details on that, that will be shared next week. I know Ms. Corallo, our director for community relations is on board. Listening this evening, I would ask her to make sure Ms. Dooton shared the information with the principals, so the principals can share that information with parents. Question in reference to when students will find out about bus transportation. Information on transportation will be forthcoming, but in the next week and a half, we are finalizing routes and all the ancillaries that will come about thereafter. This is a question about travel. Again, I I would ask you all, please take, you know, pay close attention to the state of New Jersey. Travel matrix, you know, for either countries or states that might be on, you know, this stuff quarantine list. If you are, if you do feel the need to quarantine, again, please let your building principal know. They can do the best they can to try to help support your students for that quarantine period. And we talked about ventilation and windows already. We talked about the health check that will occur every morning. It's an interesting question. What kind of impact will high volumes of students unenrolling have on the district? I I I'm not sure how to answer that. It is potentially, it, you know, I I'm just, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how to answer that. Yeah, I believe that, given the fact that most of our parents indicated that they were ready and prepared to come back to school. I don't, I I don't see this as an issue as we move forward. You've answered if a child needs to quarantine. You've answered that if a student is quarantined, they will have a remote option for that time period. Great question. Will students continue to keep, will the district continue to keep isolation rooms? In the event of student exhibits COVID systems, we, per the DAE required, that schools have what they call isolation rooms. We do not call our rooms isolation rooms, call them care rooms, because, you know, we have to, you know, treat every student's level of care. You know, but the care rooms will be available as a resource if indeed we need to monitor a student. Okay, I'm gonna take just maybe three more questions and begin to wrap up from here. You've answered the in-person, virtual. To be fair, folks, a lot of these are, I think we're getting kind of to the repetitive part, because we've answered so many questions. Yeah, daily survey. Question, will school lunch be still available for free for all students? Yes, we are in the the last year of our, you know, free lunch program and breakfast program. But we are encouraging parents to effort to keep free lunches going. We will ask parents, if you receive your free and reduced lunch application, please fill it out. That data is what the state uses to help me determine whether or not we are eligible. And so while you may not qualify, it still helps to have the information. Question about whether or not middle schoolers should be vaccinated, the answer to that is no. You know, it's that was not required at this point in time. We encourage most schools to be vaccinated, but it's not required. All right, folks, we're gonna stop here. You know, you know, by my count, we've addressed a hundred and fifty questions. There's still about a hundred and sixty to go, and that tells me that as a district, we still have a lot more for me. We still have a lot more work to do to be able to communicate with you or parents for where we're moving to, what we're doing. You know, at eight thirty, three hundred and fifty, you are still logged on. At our height, there was more than five hundred of you this evening. Thank you so much for joining us. Please know this, we are doing our best. The safety of your children is paramount. The education of your children is equally as important. I take the responsibility of being the superintendent of schools extremely seriously. There has been no more difficult time in my professional life in the last year and a half. I am proud to serve as your superintendent of schools. I am proud of my staff and the work that they've done. But most importantly, I'm grateful to our parents. I'm grateful for your patience. I'm grateful for your love, for the messages you sent. Because I'm sure many of you know that, you know, this job certainly is not easy in this period of time. But it is our job, and we will do everything we can to ensure a safe opening, return, and continuity of a full-day, five-day model. I will ask if you have additional questions, please share them with your building principals. You know, I make myself available, you know, my email address, superintendent@teenitschools.org. I will do everything we can to try to do our best to answer your questions. We have cataloged all the questions we have this evening. We'll make sure that they get answered in some formality, whether it's an FAQ, whether it's in the presentation, I'm gonna send out, you know, you know, your share with the community next week, or the communication that we're gonna share, you know, as we move forward. You know, so I would ask you all to please please stay safe. There's a few weeks left in the summer. You know, you know, please take the time for your families and with your families, and let's return. Let's return to our schools, loving each other, caring for each other, and being committed to learn. Dr. Box, about Ms. Johnson, any final words as we conclude?
I just want to say, you know, we're very excited about opening full-day instruction beginning in September. And our staff, our teachers, our principals, everyone is fully prepared to make sure that we make that experience as beneficial as possible for your students and for you, parents.
Thank you so much, Dr. B.
Agreed. Yes, thank you, everybody, for your participation tonight. Please, you know, feel free to reach out. If you have other other questions or concerns, you know, we are all in this together. We're working together to try to do the best we can. As as Dr. Irving has said, I know numerous times in very difficult circumstances. And so, you know, the adage, it takes a village, really is true, especially in times like these. And so know that we are here, we're in this together with you, and while we're not perfect, we are really gonna do the best we can and always keeping our children at the center. So, thank you.
And please know, I will always be honest with you. You know, if I have the answer, I will share it. If I don't, I will share that too. You know, our circumstances are where they are. You know, our circumstances are where they are. I hope they will get better. But if they don't, please know, I will always communicate with you and tell you in real time where we are and where we're going. That is my commitment to you all at your chief school administrator. I want to thank you all so much, you know, for everything that you've done. You know, to help support our district, and I, I wish you all a fine and good evening. I'm gonna go upstairs down my home and now make dinner. Have a good night, everyone. Take care.